I was in the war and I asked for it. Why would you make me?
So it's. Good. She had. You know, thank you. Um. And I see.
Yeah, those.
Well, I'm sure. They don't like.
Well.
I would say.
Yeah.
Pronounces.
Well.
Thank you for being here.
Oh. Yeah, I was gonna say. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Change is big.
That's. I don't know.
I saw that on. I'm sorry. I just see that. Yes, I do as well. I mean, so you're. We just. Oh, is he? Yeah, he's an ex-army guy who's talking. I like him. He has a doctor. It's very. Trace of point. Not be there. Okay. Very. Self-conscious. They're like.
Horns.
Um. No, it's not. It does. He did. He was about to ask. That's what. Pretty now. So he. So that's. Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm really good. Well, that's. Sorry. It's. That's. I didn't want.
But after. I wanted.
Yeah.
That's.
Here. Yeah, there's a office. To. Of course. Those by their. Oh. There are no. There are no safety. He's. Okay. A lot of our deaths. Mission transpires this. You know, close halls. Right. Yeah. This is. Okay. You know. Now, what they. Good. So. Next thing. It's like. Especially like. You know, process. They went out there. Well, that's. Okay. Yeah. Very good. Hard.
Yeah.
Say.
All in high school. Oh, that's. That's.
Thank you.
Great.
Good.
Good. Just head back to my.
What's up? You know. Did I have anything? You know.
Do you know if they did it last time? Did you talk to Steve?
No. Well, is it right? I'm for that.
I texted him. I feel like he did. He wouldn't have said it.
Okay. I think. It's. The other side. Maybe today. That's. Well, that's. It could. Could not. See. So. Like, hey, David. I think this will be another real. True job. On that.
Amanda. My own. You do.
It is.
That's what I've been. I'm going. I'm going to. I think. And. I think. We're. Thanks. Very. So. Yes. Okay. Well, thank. Obviously. We're. We're getting. Picture. In the. Those. And. Waiting. Another. And. So. Bill. And what. There. What. Also. Sounds. Built. You're not. So. Right. I mean. You always hear. You have. I'm. And. I went to a meeting. Since. Well, now. Over us. Being friendly. More. It's. Ray. Wants. I'm sure. Speaking. Yeah. Maybe. About. The. Yeah. It's. I. I. Didn't. We. Had. That was a miracle. I. So. Right. Right. You said. It's. So. I should. That. I don't know. So. Yeah. I did. I'm going. To. Send those. News. I'm. Like, because we could. Probably. Because that's just. That's. You know. I got. My channel. Yeah. It's not. Change. To. The. Court. That. Really. So. Yeah. I'm. Very. Hard. To. Here. I'll. Find. I think. There's. But. Also. You're. So. Let's. See. I can. I. Or. No. So. I. I. See. People. Say. Work. Um. Oh. Come on. Right. I'm. Always. Government. Office. Center. Here. Just. Wow. He's. Doesn't. Have. The. Fight. It's all. Yeah. It's. I'm. It's actually. It's. I'm. Get. That would be. I'm. My. Well. Yes. Yeah. Kevin. Park. On. Your. Second. Together. With. The. We. Were. Getting. So. I'll. Just. Down. The. Okay. But. Uh. Mr. Park. And. Park. Flipping. Down.
Lockers.
And. Right. Um. No. Based off. Your. My. We. Talk. You know. Your. Rock. Right. Your. Brains. Yeah. And. You know. They took. Me. And this. Because. I'm. I'm. They. It's. Some. It's. Something. Like. Jamie. Seven. College. And. Their. Their. Model. Is. You know. Before. That. He. Is. On. How. Very. If. Your. Mr. Park. Like. They're. And. But. They. 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 Go. Parents. Uh. They. Can. Do. They. They. All. We. Have. A concession. To. Time. You. Always. Actually. Good. You. From. There. And. That's. What. You. Do. Turn. It. Fair. At. Your. Point. Where. Okay. The. Good. It's. Sorry. Anyone. I'm. I'm. Good. It's. All. Right. We are. Moving. By. Very. Well. Good. Good. Much. Here. I. You. Know. There's. A. Look. It's. It's. So. Sir. We. 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 Wow. Have. A. Proud. Lady. Tell. Right. Um. Thank you.
How. But. You. Get. Ready. Actually.
I go. I'm. Good. Some. You. I'm. All. Mark. And. Yeah.
That's. That.
You. Um. I don't. Need. Well, that's. Uh. That's. Time. Today. It's about. A bunch. All. Here. And. Welcome. To. Yeah. For. Later. Right. But. Your. Boy. On. Your. So. Oh. But. He. He. He's. 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 Got. The. Presentation. Which. They. Don't. I'm. Going. This. On. So. He's. Kind of. Not. Looking. Um. I told. You. Message. I. See. I. It was. Been. That. It. Been. Thank you. Thank you. For. Your. Like. It. Good. That. He's. Been. There. He's. Forever. This. Was. On. You. There. Suck. It. Up. Nice. Fuck. You. Bitch. Right. And. Row. That's. Make. It. Go. Do. You. Absolutely. Seen. You know. Yeah. I'm. Sure. Whoops. Getting. Our. Hands. Or. Certainly. It's. A. That. I mean. You're. Trying. To. Guys. You know. You're. Probably. You're. About. It. By. I. It's. Thank you.
Judge. Don't. Take. No. Nothing. Oh, I. You're. Gonna. Be. All. Okay.
When it gets. Basket. Take. And. Write. That. Out. So. I don't. Impose. Because. I'll. Spread. Out.
I see. This. If I can get. In.
Yep. Oh. You got. A picture. Are you? How you doing?
Good. How you doing, sir?
I like. People. You cut it. I get. You. First.
Checking. Away.
Nope. Turn. My. Phone. Ring.
It's. Fun. So. Let. Get. You guys. I'm. Doing. My. Life. Doesn't. Work. Day. Out. More.
Wait. Sir. We're. Don't. Be. Yeah.
I've. Lost. My. Eyes. Or.
Oh, yeah. Sure. Where. Those. They are.
What? It's. It's always. But. Let's. Let's. Share. You. Think. Face.
Probably.
Derek.
Do. Do. We need some police protection today because of our running our mouth off?
I'm. The. I'm. Going. Y'all. Hold.
Okay.
I think. You. Now. I'm. Okay. Then. I'm. Yeah. Sure. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Doing. It. I look. Too. For. To. Get. You. Open. That. It's. It's. Not. Uh. Should. Be. What? Ask. Uh.
I guess. We're. Ready. To start. Find. Now. If you please stand. I will. Lead. Us off with our indication. So. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, Father. We thank you for the rank. We thank you for this country that we live in, Father. We thank you for the freedom we have. We thank you for this state. State of Texas. We thank you for the county, Van Zand County. You have blessed us so much to be able to live in this county, Father, and serve the citizens here. Father, we ask that you would give us wisdom, guidance, and knowledge, and patience today in our meeting, and that everything that we do will be honoring and glorifying to you, and it's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen. You're. Mm. All right. Pledge to the American flag. I pledge. The. Patriots. Through. The. Flag. Of. We have. The. States. Of. America. And. Two. Five. Again. For. This. Senate. This. September. Five. You. For. With. Representatives. Of. Our. System. Pledge to the Texas flag. Under. The.
Motion made, I would like to verify that what I believe is is a tent is that this planning commission would be the purpose of which would be to protect our citizens in that regard, but would not specifically designate areas such as the best that we are opposed to.
It's it's wide ranging, you're I agree, I agree, it is a it's a regional planning and so it's going to go far beyond beyond just that.
So this will do, I'm gonna say green energy such as solar, wind, the battery, it's a blanket overall.
We we talk about environmental issues and protecting the county citizens in that regard, that way it it covers anything and it could cover issues dealing with water and and things like that, so we're gonna make it the purpose generic enough that we can use it for quite a few different things that come up and and address. And again, the three ninety one commission, when two municipality or municipality counties get together, it creates a greater power for us to go to agent state or federal agencies and request and demand information, they'll respond much quicker, faster and then they can't, then they will with the individual county, so that's the purpose of the three ninety one.
So. Three ninety one commission has no authority to make law, it just has an authority to request information concerning laws that already exist.
Correct. Any any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number seven, discuss, consider and call for a countywide bond election for May third, twenty twenty five.
Yes, I put this on here. Uh. When the commissioners court start this project, we knew it was gonna be contentious, we knew everyone wouldn't agree. And we've done our due diligence, researching, and it's not this commissioners court decision whether we have this jail or not, it is the people of the county to decide this. And the only way that they're gonna be able to decide is to vote. And so I motion for them to have a May bond election in May so the citizens of Vincent County can have the opportunity to express their opinion, yes or no. But it'll be the citizens opinion, the citizens' decision on where this goes forward, not the commissioners court, and I propose that we hold this bond election in May.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Judge, could I, there's a full motion should be in your in your uh notebooks for today, and that's the language of the motion, it should be resolution and and motion.
I want to say something about that first.
Well, okay, go ahead.
So last April, I think it was last April, at the civic center, people got together to protest their taxes, is that right, was it April? Sometime last year?
Yes.
It doesn't really matter what what time it was, um, what the what the date was on that, in April of last year, around a thousand people, eight fifty to a thousand, I don't know how many people showed up to protest their taxes. Um, I thought that was a significant amount of people that showed up for that. I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but I thought it was pretty significant, we came through the last four years of federal government, we're in a recession, pretty much, the people in my precinct are struggling to pay their grocery bills. Probably groceries probably went up from a hundred and fifty dollars, a bill of groceries for a family, a hundred and fifty dollars to probably two fifty. That's pretty significant on on average of people that in my precinct that probably averaged forty four to fifty thousand dollars a year income. Those are just, um, those numbers that I'm using forty four to fifty thousand, I'm just guessing, I asked some people what the thought the um household income would be generally, I figure probably a lot of people in my precinct are less than that. This court, between this court right here, we have about five years experience on the court, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me. No correction. So I've got forty days, precinct three's got forty days, Brandon's the Brandon and judge have two years, and Cliff has
Six months or so.
Six months. And we're talking about two hundred million dollars in projects that are in front of us right now. And I just think somebody needs to hit the brakes.
I'll respond to that, uh, I'm not gonna disagree with you Mitch.
Because you can't disagree with that.
But this you, the people will have their voice heard, just like at the protest, if they want to protest this, they vote no on the bond, that's what it is. Uh, and if this bond does not pass, we cannot, as of right now, we cannot come back to it for three years, the state is trying to make it five years, so. I've already got the letter from the state jail commission stating that if we do not have a plan, they will put us in noncompliance, and we cannot do anything for three years. And if what happens, if they put us in noncompliance and we have to ship out every prisoner out of that sheriff's office, you're looking at five million dollars a year that we're giving to counties to invest their money, I mean, our money for their county. And so you're gonna be paying five, if if that scenario happened, which it's very possible, you're paying five million dollars to pay for, we paid for Henderson County's jail, half of their jail was paid for by us. And this is gonna continue, so you're gonna pay the five million dollars and give to other counties. So why not invest in us? And have people use their money to invest in us, it's just like what Trump says. You know, America is giving this money to all these countries and letting them go everywhere because we're not investing in ourselves. And if we do this, it's the same scenario just to a smaller scale. The the decision is gonna have to be made. And the public will have the opportunity to make it, and it's their right, and if they do not like it, their protest is to vote no.
I get a chance to respond to it.
Yes.
You know, the three years bothers me, um, we went to a town hall meeting last Monday and you're standing in front of people, talking to them about it, and they're totally confused. They think the courthouse and the jail are the same thing, some people think we're putting the jail in the court, in the Paul Michael building. So they're confused about it, and there are a lot of people that are angry about it, that we would, that we would this early in this this young of a court be pushing two projects at the same time. And you and I had discussed, you and I discussed, you and I discussed it, and you said, you said, and I said, that we probably could have done one project, but we probably can't do both at the same time. We discussed that.
We did.
Okay. So if they don't pass the jail plan that we're putting before them, we're stuck on a three, we're stuck for three years. All I'm asking for is a little time to get a better plan, to make sure that we've done, we've done everything that we can, that's, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't need a new jail, because we probably do. Um, and and it's, we can't bury our head in the sand and say that things haven't changed over the last ten years, because they have, our county's changing, whether we like it or not, it's growing like, it's growing leaps and bounds, and 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 we can't say that our sheriff, our sheriffs have not struggled and law enforcement, there is, there is a problem, and they they need to be addressed, I don't know that the jail is how to address that. Um, and we also, all of us know that we we're not in control of our jail. The state controls our jail, they tell us how to run the jail, is that true or false?
That's true.
Okay, so basically, um, you know, I know you're, there are people that here that are upset, if you're upset, call your senator, call your representatives and let and hammer down on them, that's that's part of our government, we're being faced with mandates that we have no control over, but we do have control over doing, and you said you did your due diligence.
I've been on this a year, I've done my due diligence.
We wouldn't be having this conversation this morning right now.
And the reason that
If I felt like it had been done, if I felt like that, because I have seen nothing in front of me from yeah, I haven't seen anything in front of me that says the jail, I've not seen a piece of paper from the, from anybody saying that we have to have a new jail right now.
You had the letter from Brandon Wood stating, if we do not have a plan, we go in noncompliance, that's from the state of Texas.
A plan, that's a plan. That's a plan. I'm just saying, give us a little bit more time, I'll I'll be ready to do something in November.
And also, well, that is my, our job, mainly mine as I've been presenting it, to get the facts out there, which Monday, I think I did it last Monday, I think I did a pretty good job, people, some people became confused, maybe I need to tweak it a little bit and I'll inform the people more. But it's also, when you say people are confused, it's because when you go on those phones, there's people talking on those phones that don't have a clue what's going on, and people listen to them, so we're fighting not only social media, we're also fighting everyone that's against us, and it's our job to get the message out there. And I will do that, and they will have their voice heard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Well, I'd I'd like to say what what I feel is that, uh, we as a commissioners court haven't really sat, this is the first time we've sat down and discussed it in depth as far as going to a bond election, I feel like that we have not adequately provided the citizens of this county what the reasons and uh why we need, well, no, we know the reasons why we need a new jail, but the due diligence that has been done. Uh, we are, we have given them one option, three hundred and fifty bed jail. I don't understand why three hundred and fifty beds was decided, we weren't given an option for two fifty. We currently have a hundred and forty four, that's what we have, and we're running at capacity most of the time. And, uh, you know, going to two fifty, what would be the price difference between that and three fifty? I don't know, um, that we have actually gotten any kind of quote or bid to modernize or add to our existing jail.
That's not true, Judge.
Any bid?
We we had the discussion, and you've seen it in the jail and needs analysis, where it says that we need a two hundred and eighty bed minimum jail by twenty forty, if we go build a two hundred and fifty bed shed jail now, we're gonna be having another bond election to add on to it. And in there, so you want to get a two hundred and fifty bed jail, if that's your number, when the jail commission says we need two eighty eight, well, let's build this two fifty jail in twenty thirty, well, two years later, well, we need to expand some more. Do it all at once, it's a lot cheaper. And on
Are we gonna have to raise taxes to to fund the deputies? I mean, where does it end, like, where do, where does it end, I mean, I wrote these things down last night, um, sheriff's office struggling to fill all positions. I could ask him, I'm sure that's true. We have a new sheriff, a new court, a new auditor, a new fire marshal, um, we're talking about a twenty five million dollar remodel, we haven't said anything about a ten million dollar radio program. Um, we have twelve million dollars in the bank, is that right?
Yes.
It's took us, how long it take us to get that?
Ten years.
Okay, that was probably the majority of that, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, was funded by the sheriff having turned in money back in. True or false? Is that true or false?
That is close.
It's close. Um, the timing for all this could be off, in my opinion, we need to stop, look and listen, and get hard facts on courthouse. Can we leave the courthouse, I mean, I know we're talking about two different, two different things, but these are just questions I had, can we, can we abandon the courthouse, is it even legal? Is it what our constituents want us to do, if the jail bond doesn't pass, what's plan B? Because we can't do anything for three years on another bond proposal, if it passes, are we gonna have to raise taxes every year to increase pay for deputies and other large projects, because we don't know. Um, how bad is the courthouse, if we remodel, can we use Paul Michael building to keep our offices serviced and the public, if we move move satellite buildings to consolidate into one building, will the sale of those buildings proceeds go to the debt incurred? I have a lot of questions, and I want to hit the brakes, like, I just, I can't do it, I mean, I've I've lived my life as very simple, maybe I'm too simple minded to build this court, but I walk the streets with my people, and I'm telling you, they ain't gonna vote for it. I don't care how way you can, you can put lipstick on a pig all you want to. But it ain't gonna happen.
I'll disagree with that, because where I've gone, I've had support, I've had disagreements too, and I think to the people out here, we are not, we are not the bad guys here. And you can say, here's what's happened, this has been going on for twenty to twenty five years, and nobody's done a dagum thing about it. It's just like when you go buy a car, if you go buy this car, well, I'm not gonna put any money into this car, and you run it, and you run it till it's, till it's done, you have put no money into it to maintain it. And now you've got to go buy another brand new car, so you basically spent no money for twenty years, now all of a sudden, you're having to spend all this money because you didn't maintain what you had, because they did not address this problem. And now it makes this court, me, I think is the main one, look bad, because I'm actually addressing this problem when nobody else had the guts to do it.
And I appreciate that, I do appreciate you doing that, and I appreciate the work that you put in on it. And I'm asking you for six months.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking for, six months, I'm not against, I'm sorry, I've got so fired up.
No, you're fine, it's good.
It ain't fine, I know where I cross the line somewhere, but uh, I've just, I'm asking for six months, we're trying to do too much too soon. And the public needs to trust us. And it's hard for the public to trust the government.
I agree, and I, and I agree with, this is a lot. You've got this battery and storage facility going on, you've got a courthouse going on, you've got a jail going on, you've got a sheriff's office going on. I realize it, that is a lot to swallow. But I want to go back again, at least this court is addressing it, and y'all have to look at that and respect that, you may not agree with me, you may not like me, but at least we're addressing this situation.
You have courage, I'll get you that.
I'm sorry, sorry. Uh, I would like to say that going back to what I was trying to express, uh, I don't think there's a commissioner or myself that disagrees that we need to be planning for a new jail. My problem is, the current proposal will not slot, it will not pass, and it will put us behind the eight balls. And what what I believe commissioners want to do is step back, get more information, reevaluate what it is we're doing, and provide more information, another thing that hasn't been determined or not has been uh, given us is what are the additional operating costs that the county's gonna have to fund for a larger jail? That's another thing that we're gonna have to do. So that is what I believe that we need to do, is we need to sit on it right now and uh, come back as a group with information to citizens, and when we get enough citizens showing support for it, uh, then uh, put it before them in a bond election, that's that's what I would do.
Well, if that's what the majority of this court wants to do, I'm on board.
I appreciate you, the work you've put into it, and the other people that are with you. And you're right, it does need to be addressed, and you're right about the last twenty five years of things being pushed aside. Um, and we are, we are being backed into a corner, I just need a little bit more time to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and forty days is not enough for me. And I'll, and I'll say this, y'all did bring me in a few times when y'all were discussing it. Um, but I was not privy to some things, and
Then I will make a motion to hold this bond election in November.
I'll second that.
All right.
Is that possible, Tonda, with with the way that we've written this on the agenda, do we just table this?
We gotta table.
Yeah, the law has a very, very narrow time period. It's a number, certain number of days prior to election day that the bond election has to be called for, that's why this was on the agenda today, because time period for calling for a bond election in May ends on Friday this week, fourteen, so you can't call for one this far in advance.
So table this one, and then we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna have one in May, but we'll table this one, and we'll get our information out, that gives us five months, I mean, November, November. That'll give us this summer, it'll get us to this courthouse. And I agree, it'll give people time to breathe, and and we'll go through the courthouse for right now, and then we'll, we'll, we'll have the the jail in November.
So technically, Brandon, I think you had previously made the motion to have the bond election, I think that motion died for a while.
Second, correct.
So now.
So now I want to take, I want to table this. Yes, I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
All right, motion is made to table the agenda item, and second, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? I got, I heard two ayes. All right, motion passes to table this item. Item number eight, discuss and authorize county judges to sign the renewal with the National Museum of the USAF uh, and UZ for the static display of the F four D aircraft at Veterans Memorial Plaza. That aircraft is on loan to us and and our beautiful, one of the best veteran memorials I I've taken in the state, and we have to reauthorize a loan each year, so is there a motion to authorize me to sign this renewal?
I'll make a motion to authorize you to sign the renewal.
All right, is there a second? All right, motion made, and second, any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider releasing county easements on Landon Street and portions of Anzac County Road thirty two oh four in Myrtle Springs.
Uh, yes, this is one of mine, Judge, I've had this put on there, uh, I was come to about the uh, the Landon Street there, and uh, I've done a field check, and I, I was new into this, so I I asked Keith to go out with me and look at it, and uh, he and I both agree with it, is Dennis here? Let's see, uh, anyway, we we went out and looked at it, and we agreed to to give it up the the half that they they have asked for, and uh, but if there's any utility easements that are that are on that roadway, they will still be there. We're not, we can't give those up.
Because there's a power line that runs along this line.
Yes, so, uh, but we've, we've all looked at it and agreed with it, and uh, uh, I'd like a motion if we do this.
All right, motion been made, is there a second?
I second this his motion.
Okay, and uh, any further discussion? And all this has been submitted with the drawings on what's gonna be abandoned.
Yes.
Uh, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider acceptance of a check from the city of Edgewood in the amount of nineteen hundred and seventy two dollars and eighty cents for the payment of road materials hauled by Anzac County in precinct three.
I make a motion to to accept this.
A second.
All right, any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider solicitation of bids for road and bridge materials for the contract period of May first twenty twenty uh, through April uh, thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Um, I have a question, do we, do we do a request for proposal abroad? Yep.
It's that time of year again where we have to put out, you know, get permission to solicit bids for road and bridge materials and fuel. That's what we would do.
And we, we put that out to to known vendors, do we ever seek other vendors?
Uh, we can, the, you know, call and request to be put on, if you have somebody you'd like to add to it, we can add them to the list, we just keep up with the list every year and send it out to the prior ones, and then anybody new, we add to it.
All right, so is there a motion?
I I make a motion. The solicit bids, that's correct.
I'll second that.
All right, motion is made, and second, and alls, any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider solicitation of bids for road and bridge fuel for the contract period of June first, twenty twenty five, and May through May thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Yes.
Can I just ask why they're not the same dates?
Uh, yours always been different since I've been here, I have no idea.
Because it's always done that way.
Yes, that's good, yeah, that's, yeah, absolutely.
All right, uh, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to consider solicit, or to, for us to solicit bids for road and bridge fuel for a contract period of June one to May thirty one, twenty six.
All right, there's a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose like sign, motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, and consider authorize the county judge to sign a master cooperative purchasing agreement with the Sheriff's Association of Texas for cooperative purchasing services.
This is me again, this is just so we can become members of buy boards for like the sheriff's departments and possible, or any commissioners to buy products, to buy boards, we have to have a membership, and this is to get our membership on board with them.
Yeah, buy board is like a cooperative purchase.
And it always has been across the, yes.
Gives us a lot of purchasing power, is there a motion?
Um, I had a question, on the buy boards today, how do they keep costs down, how does that work?
They contract with the different vendors, and because it's
And then certain vendors are what do the buy board.
And they do their own bidding processes, and so that gives us the opportunity to have lower prices or get competitive prices on these items.
It keeps us from having to go out for bids on every particular item they'll buy that's ever been a thousand.
If it's, if it's on buy board, we don't have to bid, bid it out.
But but we have some, we have some belief that by participating in these buy boards, it keeps our costs down, because because they are looking at the pricing and getting the best prices.
Yes.
Good. Then I make that motion that we authorize the county judge to sign a master cooperative purchasing agreement with the Sheriff's Association.
All right, motion made, there's a second. Second. Motion has been made, and second, any further discussion, if not, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss, and consider uh, authorizing the county judge to sign an interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Service Center for cooperative purchasing services to the interlocal purchasing system, also known as TIPS.
Me again, it's the same thing, it's another buy board.
Do you want a chair up here? Okay. Well, I I mean, I I agree, we should be doing everything we can to keep costs down and spend our money wisely, and by getting a part, being a part of these these uh, these purchasing groups, I think we do just that. So I'd make that motion to authorize the county judge to sign an interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Systems, the TIPS program.
All right, motion made, there's a second. Motion made, second, any further discussion, alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alls oppose like sign, motion passes. Uh, Nicole, you may sit down. Item number fifteen, discuss, consider approval of the Anderson Acres on farm to market, uh, fifteen oh four, Willspoint, Texas, located in precinct three.
Yes, sir, Judge, this is one of mine that I've put on here, and uh, it's actually a man manufactured home rental community. Uh, these are, uh, the owner owns all of the homes and they're brand new, and uh, Brian Abbott and I, and I think Tonda's been in on all of this too, uh, and I think they have turned in all of their their stuff that we have requested. Uh, the fees are what the county charges minus what they have paid Mr. Abbott's office for what he does. And uh, the this, this what I've put on here today does not grant any variances. Uh, I don't think there's any grants at this time. Uh, but if it comes back to the court, then then we we take care of them at that time. And uh, from from all of my uh, working, and I've had Keith in with me on this, because this was a project that started when he was in office, and uh, Keith, Keith and I both agree that uh, that as of right now, everything's up to the par, and Tonda, do you have any?
Yes, there are a number, probably about a half a dozen homes that were placed too close to that county road behind the project.
Yes.
They will have to be moved, and you'll have to inspect that to make sure that happens, or some paperwork for them.
And and I think that's already been discussed.
Yes.
Uh, so other than, other than that, and and if I'm not mistaken, Keith is the one that talked to him, and you are in agreements to to move them.
Yes, sir, after, or after the commissioners court honors, so knowing her variance, I think there's a four foot difference on property line to to maybe it's five foot.
I think it was closer to six, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, maybe. It's nineteen foot eight inches or something like that. It'd be twenty-five.
But that's a separate comeback. And if, if we agree to that, it would be the court. But that's what I'm saying. If there is any variances, that has to come back to the court on that. At this point, we're just granting him to go on with, with, proceed with his, his work. Because all of this paperwork and will letters has all been turned in. Uh, and, uh, if, 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 can, can I, Keegan, am I right? Everything's been turned in?
Yes, sir.
I don't think you're Keegan, but
Yes, sir, with all our letters.
But, but Keegan, I, I need that from you.
Yes, sir.
So, so if, if everything's
So how many, uh, blocks or, uh, how many mobile homes are, uh, anticipated? I can't quite tell.
I think it's thirty.
Thirty, yes.
Thirty, yes. Okay. And the drawings that have been submitted are going to be revised to make sure that's not too close to the county road. Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
The drawing is correct, but some of the homes have been placed inside the easement. That's not something that variance can be granted for. They'll have to be moved.
Okay. So this is already in, in, uh, this has already been built. Is that what you're saying or?
We had, we had a bit of trouble, um, because, yes, Mr. Anderson did proceed without his permit and we had to
He's making it right.
Yes, he is. He has been very responsive when we have pointed things out to him, um, and he is, is making it right. But those houses will have to be moved because they are in the east.
All right, is there, and we, we are, um,
Can I say something? If we approve that, how do you enforce him moving the house?
So, a- and that's something we're gonna, the court not need to be about, but yes, so, so you're approving the plot, you're approving the drawing.
That's what it is. Okay. And this is for, is it for filing purposes? Is that what it is?
You can say that now if you want, but, but you're approving the drawing and the supporting documentation that has been submitted to Mr. Abbott. Then before he grants anything, there has to be an inspection to make sure that it's been compliant.
And fire marshal does inspect it, I guess? Who inspects it?
Commissioner.
Commissioner does.
Yes, sir.
So there is, there is supposed to be a fire marshal inspection because this is a commercial property where you're asking people to come in and it's, they don't own it. So there has to be a fire inspection done on the actual properties as well. This is another situation where we have a commercial business coming into Van Zant County and my office knows nothing about it.
And, and I agree with you, Kevin. That's separate from the plat requirements.
Right.
The plat requirements are, is what, is what they're working at. Then before Mr. Anderson releases anything, he's got to take care of business with fire marshal separately.
Okay, I'm clear.
Nice question. Uh, all the fire marshal, so I think if I'm mistaken, we had to get a letter from your office, they saved my whole year. Which was part of our package turned in. I could be wrong.
That was only for the serial.
Oh, okay. I apologize. And I was saying, I know we're talking to someone about the road lifts and how much, what all we need, so.
Our, our office does handle the specific side of it, but we also hire, we also handle fire, obviously, fire inspection. So there's a whole, it's always a process. Uh, but it all starts with the submitted plans before anything's ever brought in. I understand you're making it right now. Uh, but this is just kind of a trend of things. Have this time to go back where we can start from. And really to save you money, because now you're going to go have to go in and spend the money. You have to spend the money, you have those places put on there, right? And now you're going to have to spend the money to move them. So when you follow the process, it actually saves the business owner a lot of heartache and it saves the citizens a lot of heartaches because they're not really doing that.
Oh, oh, on this, because I wasn't aware of the fire marshal stuff, uh, or can I legally ask you, did we need to table this until, or can we go ahead?
We're just approving the plaque.
Plat is permission to build. He is permission to occupy.
So I guess what I'm asking is, is with what we're approving the plat, he can carry on
Building.
Building.
Yes, sir.
And then, but before he can lease anything, then he has to get with him.
And that's because it's commercial rental property, not private residence.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess I make a motion. Let me read it. Yeah, I'll read, I'll read you the motion. Says to discuss and then consider, uh, to approve plat and supporting documentation of Anderson Acres on Farm to Market fifteen oh four, Willspoint, Texas, located precinct three for filing purposes. That's, that's your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, like, signed? Motion passes. All right, at this time, time, we will go into closed executive session. And applies to section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code to seek advice of his attorney regarding any or contemplated litigation or consultation with attorney regarding matters protecting Thank you. We are now adjourned.